We'll notify the Board in writing of who the designee is. So we don't have a letter from the Mr.
That's what I was looking for.
Yikes. Good evening. I didn't hear the bell toll yet. Did? Welcome to the Wolfboro ZBA, January 8th, 2024. We have tonight, I'm Audrey Klein, the Chairman, and Suzanne, the Vice Chairman, and Sarah Silk, Luke Freidenberg, Chuck Sumner, and I believe Kate will be joining us here shortly.
Alternate.
Kate Alternate, Kate McMahon Alternate. We're waiting for some information before we start with the first case from the file, which Tom Planner has left the room to go see if he can get. Would you like to read into the record the site visits, Sarah, while we're waiting?
Yes, and the first one is Brent Ash Rushford, QPR TRT 50%, we're on Rushford, QPR TRT 60%, 42 Worcester Island Road, tax map number 258-15, case number 10-V-2023.
In your microphone?
Yes, sorry. Or get closer.
Kate McMahon here is here.
Projector 175, Section 43A, 1I, encroachment into a setback. Site visit 1824 at 3:00 PM. ZBA present, Audrey Klein Chair, Suzanne Ryan Vice Chair, Sarah Silk Clerk, Chuck Sumner Member, Kate McMahon, and please correct that to alternate. Applicant representative present was Andrew Bernard, Andrew Bernard Land Management. Mr. Bernard indicated the water damage caused at the base of the building due to a faulty overly narrow roof overhang. Window sills and framing also damaged. Floor joists rotted, needing to be replaced. Corner will be squared off to conform with roof edge. Notch near driveway entrance will also be squared off. Attempting to join shed roof, gable roof, and four-foot old porch roof to better direct waterway from sides of building. Especially submitted Sarah M. Silk Clerk. Would you like me to read the grant?
It's stayed adaptive now?
I guess you might as well do it now since we can't proceed until Tavis gets back.
Granite State Adaptive 5 Jennifer Circle, tax map number 188-028, case number 01SE24. Special exception under Article 12, Section 175-82A, farm agriculture, farming of the Wolfboro Planning and Zoning Ordinance to allow for construction of an agricultural therapeutic equine facility/farming. Site visit 1824 at 3:30 PM. CBA present, Audrey Klein Chair, Sarah Silk Clerk, Suzanne Ryan Vice Chair, Chuck Sumner Member, Kate McMahon, please correct that to alternate, and 340 Luke Freidenberg Member. Applicant representatives present, Jennifer Fraser, GSA Executive Director, Mark, and I know I'm not going to pronounce that correctly, Zonius? Something close to that?
Olsonah.
My apologies. GSA Volunteer Brian Walsh Horizon Engineering, Inc. The site was reviewed with the representatives for the applicant. Road near the house will avoid wet area. Pink ribbon behind house indicates poorly drained soils. There is just the one entrance, no access over easement to the rear. Three areas near the house for outside riding arenas bond will have interior equine activity. The actual road for access to a house in the woods was not known although shown on the plan.
Thank you.
I've given copies to Tavis for the record, Secretary, whatever.
So the agenda lists the first case for the Worcester Island project and the second case for the Jennifer Circle project. However, we can't start the first one because Tavis is out getting some information from the file. So would the Board consider hearing the Granite State Adaptive case first? Or would you like to take a break until Tavis gets back?
It shouldn't be that long. I mean, the file is right down there.
Downstairs.
Let's just take a five-minute break. I'd hate to see the contractor sit and wait.
Is that okay with everybody? I don't care either way. No, she's saying let's just take a break to see, to wait for Tavis to come back.
I'm going to take a five-minute recess until the Planner comes back upstairs.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
New business, number four, and move it right now into discussion? We have to wait five minutes? Okay. If he's not back in five minutes?
Better not send him anymore. He's not back.
No. I can't. Did you figure out which ones of the minutes you wanted to? Okay.
I'm glad you said. The first application.
Because technically, we can't hear it. If the owner's. Not, we don't have anything that says that. The agent signing applications. It's not even, it's not even a question. Imagine if somebody went through the process of somebody else's property and knew it, right?
Surprise when they.
Yeah.
I was surprised that you.
Right. Yeah, yeah. It is, it is surprising because after those, it's like, that's like no man's land back there. Think about it. Minutes. And three. Okay. Shall we come back?
Take your. Oh, I don't know that.
Oh, okay. All right, we're back. I'm sorry to say that the first case, we don't have the, all of the appropriate paperwork to be able to hear this. And I have to ask the applicant to speak with Tavis about what is missing or what is needed or what he needs to do to put this on next month. So we're not going to be able to open or hear the first case.
Well, just so he understands, we, per our application process, we need a letter from the owner of the property that gives you the authority to represent him. Do you have that?
Did you turn that into the office with your paperwork?
I bet it's this, I bet it's this.
This is part of our contract.
Yeah, no, that's not.
Let me just. He wrote, so the owner wrote an email to the planning department?
Uh, to me.
Okay, so this says you're the authorized agent for town permitting and acting general contractor. So is it your understanding when, when they said town permitting, it would be a variance process as opposed to a building permit? Did you turn this into the planning department with your application?
I believe so.
Okay, I'm sorry, we don't have it and they're looking for it, so. Okay, I guess I need to touch base with Tavis again to see whether this was properly noticed in the newspaper. We, we're going to need to get copies, I think.
I can understand your reluctance to let it go.
Yeah. Well, we'll try to straighten that out. Thank you, sorry for the delay.
It, it doesn't, it doesn't say, it says he's, he's the applicant for the permitting and acting general contractor, but it doesn't say, it doesn't say that he is the designee to represent Mr.
Brent Rushford.
At the.
Does, does your email specifically have the language that we requested in the application? Okay. You could forward that to Tavis if you find it.
I guess we could open this and continue it.
No, we can't.
What's he got there?
You can show it to us.
You look at it, I can't see it.
Okay, yep, so I'm going to. That's just what I'm reading, thank you.
It's, will the building permit? Probably want to get that.
Say permits or other authorizations, so I'm going to go with that means this application. I guess I'll leave that there for Tavis, but you can include it in the packet in the file for historic purposes, Tavis?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay. So we will.
Open the.
I'll open, I'll open the public hearing for case 10V2023.
There it is.
For 42 Worcester Island Road. Would you like to come up and speak?
Hi there, I'm Andrew Bernard. I met most of you out here at the site earlier today.
Can you pull a microphone up closer to you? Please.
Okay, can you hear?
Thank you. You can pull it in so you don't have to lean over.
Ever. Yeah, I don't know, I guess I'll answer questions or, pretty much I'm here because I'm looking to encroach on a setback by adding 10-inch overhangs to a portion of a building built in the 60s with no overhangs as a way to prevent any further rot damage to the repairs that I'm currently doing because of rot damage.
Tavis, do you know if this is, it's a legally non-conforming building or approved with other variances prior?
I understand it is legally existing non-conforming structure. No prior variances.
How did you determine that you were encroaching? I'm looking at the maps you've given us and I don't know, once they're copied several times, I don't know whether the scale is accurate. Did you, did you do measurements on site?
Yeah, that lower corner is 38 feet off of the water.
Thirty?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Yeah, so I'm within the 50-foot buffer.
And Tavis, I don't know that it matters too much, but part of the area that's being requested for a variance is over constructed deck already. And it doesn't enclose livable space. It's like the larger part of the roof structure that's being proposed? Does that technically need a variance if it's over, already over a deck?
No, the ordinance requires a special exception to roof over a deck.
It's not really roofing over the deck.
I, I know.
I just, I, I mean, it's included in the square footage that's being asked for. It's actually the larger percentage of the square footage. I was just looking at the building, I was, you know, thinking that it's inside of present construction. Does anybody else have any questions?
I do, I have some issues. Under 17543. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because we don't have on either of these drawings the point at which the setback is, or having to be set back from. So I looked at the ordinance itself for expansion and extension. It's A1, small a, and the purpose of the section is to establish and distinguish between permitting requirements with respect to building permits, variances, expansions, or extensions. And then go to B, B is the one that's the key to this. Any building permit, application, or applicants, applicants to the zoning board of adjustments made pursuant to this section. It says should include a plan, but read further. Any application that proposes further encroachment requiring a variance shall include a plan prepared by a New Hampshire licensed surveyor. The plan shall include all relevant existing and proposed conditions and dimensions. We don't, we, I'm not going to sit here and scale this thing out. We don't have a reference point where the setback is on this one and we don't have it on the one with the drawing with the house. So I think until we get that information.
Yep.
That's on the building permit.
I'm looking, okay? I'm looking to see what it is.
But that's not our job to have to pull out a building permit to see where the scale is.
So Andrew, how did you establish that it's 38 feet from the shoreline now?
I measured with my tape measure.
Okay. And is that right at the corner and it gets better as you go around the corner of the house, probably?
Yeah.
All right.
Because the land jetties out. Yeah. Yeah. It grows.
So I don't doubt that you're within the 50 feet. I don't think site measurements, trying to find the high watermark on that slope is, in the middle of winter, is probably very accurate. I think that, I think the point is if we don't identify what the dimensions are, that down the road, we won't know if there's another variance request or if there's a question of what it is that we approved. Now, this is a sewage disposal site plan with an actual scale on it, which, well, I don't know if it's a scale, it's written in here in pencil, but they're usually one to 20 feet. Of course, it's hard to say when it gets copied.
You know, I'll say it again. It's the applicant's responsibility with the assistance of the Planner to get the information that we need in accordance with the regulation to us. We don't point and say, well, 50 feet must be over there. And we don't go back into old records and search it out. That's not our job. I would make a motion to continue this hearing until we get a complete information of what we need and we get that, the linear feet of the, the number of the linear feet should be on here somewhere.
It's in the, you mean, so it's in the packet, but it's not on the. Phone call.
Correct.
So are you asking, I didn't hear you say it, but are you asking for what that section called out for, which is from an engineer?
Yes, I am. We don't have a waiver, they haven't asked for a waiver, we don't have a waiver.
I was, what I was told the concern was, was 17543, Section A1I is where my focus was and that was the encroachment onto the setback. Because.
Can I read the section?
What that says to me is that I'm already encroaching in a setback. If the building inspector has told me that this is what I have to come to argue, then it's quite obvious that I'm within a setback.
We do need to have on record how much you are within the setback. I think the discussion right now is how formal does that, does that document need to be? Can it be something that's scaled off a previous professional drawing? Does it need to be a new professional drawing?
What I pulled up with assistance of the town clerk, we pulled up.
I see that.
Professional drawing and it's scaled at 10, 10 foot to one inch.
I want to read the section that you read myself. Okay.
So Audrey, the site plan that you have is not adequate to establish what we need to establish here?
So I think that's what we're discussing. You mean the site plan that came in our packet?
No, the one, the old one you were looking at.
The one in the building permit?
Yes. Yes.
I think that it's likely that it is if it was properly measured and submitted with our packet. And what I'm hearing, the half of the argument is, we shouldn't need to go look for this stuff.
True.
And the other half is, this says it needs to be by a licensed surveyor, which I think you could argue that this is a de minimis application, and that would be too high of a bar to set, and that's the other argument. So, I think there's two arguments.
Well, you can't... you can't... you can't use the tax record as a scale, and it has to be to scale as a minimum, and that's... that tax... this tax drawing is not accurate.
Not for what we're looking for in this... I agree that those are not.
This is a variance, the variance is a high standard. It's a high bar to me. And we slide backwards on these, and down the road, nobody knows what happened. I mean, it might have been helpful, and it's probably not Jason's job, but, I mean, he denied it because of the encroachment, but he didn't say what that was.
He would have had to go through from scaling to tell us what it was, or to show it in denial, and I agree with you, it should be there.
Then somebody should have done it. It's... I mean, I could do it, but it won't be accurate.
Well, also, I don't think we should be doing it.
We shouldn't be doing the work of the department and the applicant.
So, let me ask you this, Suzanne, to get to one of the points. Do you think if this septic system by a professional design was used, and the applicant went and made proper measurements and notes for us, and then copied this and turned it in, would that suffice for you? Or are you going to want to go with the licensed surveyor? This is not a survey, it's a septic.
It's not a survey, and it was done in 1969.
So, the difference between a septic plan and a survey is, the septic designer uses all the information he can get to do a plan that is good enough for his purposes. It's often used as a site plan, but it's not a survey.
Give me back my paper. I didn't write this.
I know.
The town of Wolfville voters voted this ordinance in. We don't have a waiver provision.
But we have a variance provision.
Yes, but we would have to waive this section.
We could vary that section. We could give a variance to that requirement.
I wouldn't use the word variance, I'd use the word waiver.
We don't have waivers.
Well, you can't... how can you vary... well, first of all, they didn't ask for this.
That's true.
So, you can't vary something that wasn't asked for.
We're getting to that. I guess... I think there's a point at which requiring a professional licensed surveyor or engineer becomes not helpful.
Yeah, with all due respect, I'm...
We're kind of talking amongst ourselves here. I'm pretty sure I know what your opinion is.
Yeah.
And I guess the question is, how does the board feel about that?
Okay, can I just... I want to ponder something here.
Microphone.
Yes. Was not done by a surveyor.
That's right, it's done by a septic system person.
Okay, and was it approved by the state for the septic system?
Uh, yes.
That it could go in that spot?
Yep.
Right. So, I'm trying to determine in my mind the validity of that drawing. If it was to scale, at this point, we can't tell if that particular drawing was enlarged or shrunk.
We can't, but one can determine that by knowing the size of one of these buildings, and then measuring it and determining whether it's the same size on the ground. That's how I would do it.
And the other point that I'm looking at here is, I guess, is degrees, in that that building existed on that drawing, and we're not... The encroachment is not having to do with an addition to the building in the footprint, it has to do with the overhang. So, I'm thinking in my mind that this building shown on the drawing is probably the same.
Well, they did so many additions, how do you know?
I thought... it looked to me as if the whole thing was there.
1969?
Maybe it's not, but it looked to me that we came in here, we saw this area here that's done, I don't know.
Tavis, was there any indication in the building permit file after the original build that there were additions made, and were they in recent history?
I haven't gone through the history, but going through the file briefly, I did not see any additions. Nothing, definitely not in the recent history.
I believe that as far as alterations since then, what they have done is they have enclosed a lower deck that had living space above it, and turned that into their dining room, which is actually part of the problem that I'm trying to fix here and protect in the future with some overhangs.
When you look at... if you were to look at the footprint on this drawing, can you tell if it is everything as it exists today?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that we could compare it to the tax map, right? That would be updated.
Well, no, no, the tax map is notoriously inaccurate.
If you had the actual tax card where they have the dimensions of the building, I mean, it looks to me like certainly in the area that we're talking about, that all of that was there, but that's just an opinion.
I have a tax card.
So, when you put this 38 and 32 on here, was this... was that scaled off this drawing or from your field measurement?
Field measurement is how I got the 38 number.
All right, we're doing work we shouldn't be doing. Administration should have taken care of this. However, I'll make a concession, and I'm tired of having to do this over and over again, and it's unfair to you, the applicant, that we don't get the material that we need to make a decision. We do have what's called a checklist. I don't know if it's ever being used anymore, it's page 10. We should get that in our packet that shows that administration has gone through the checklist. So, with the checklist, it is less stringent than the ordinance, and I don't know if we want to be...
That's an issue.
And I don't know if we want to be granting permission or such off a checklist, but versus the ordinance, personally, I don't like to do that, but I will read to you what could happen, and it will still require a continuance of this meeting. So, the checklist has, "A plot plan or scale drawing will be required as part of your presentation to the Board of Adjustments, since a similar plan is usually used for building permit." So, we should have had that in the first place. "A plot plan or scale drawing on 11 by 17 for the purpose of a zoning application should contain the following features: be up-to-date and dated, drawn to scale with drawing numbers and north arrow," which we do have a north arrow, "signature and name of plan preparer, allot dimensions and bearings, and any bounding streets and their rights-of-way widths and half sections, location and dimensions of existing required services," that's non-applicable, "the existing buildings or other structures with their dimensions and encroachments," that probably is non-applicable, "all proposed building structures and additions with dimensions and encroachments indicating proposed on the plan," but this one is applicable, "H zoning envelope made from setback required by zoning ordinance, indicate zone classification, all setback dimensions, indicate any zone change in lines, elevations and contours, location and numbering of parking spaces, non-applicable, dimensions and traffic, non-applicable, any requirement loading and unloading, non-applicable." However, there are things on here that tells me we need something that gives us a number, not just pointing over there that that's where the setback is. So, I would make a motion that we continue this hearing until a date certain here in the town hall, and get the accurate information as to where those bounds are and where the setback would be.
Do I have a second?
I'll give a second. It shows on our meeting date list that our next meeting would be February 5.
Is there a second?
She seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that part.
So, it'd be February 5.
So, all in favor of promotion?
Discussion? Can we have discussion for just a minute?
Uh, yes, okay, discussion, yes, Chuck.
Whether it's 32 feet, or 38 feet, or some other number, I think we can agree that it is... the building right now is in violation, it's a non-conforming structure.
It's not in violation, but it's non-conforming, yeah.
It is non-conforming. And we know that. We don't know the number, but we know what we're working with. And all Andrew wants is another 10 inches to extend the roof out so he can protect the structure and continue with his work. And I understand why, in a lot of cases, we do want, you know, proper surveyed plot plans and so forth, but in this case, I think we know enough to grant the variance.
You know, I already lowered the bar.
So, I...
But we know, we know that it's... we know there is a number. We don't know what it is, but there is a number that the property is too close to the lake. Does another 10 inches beyond that make a difference to anything that we're going to decide here?
Well, that's the variance question. The question for me is, how do we properly notate this for the file for the next time this comes before a board in 10 years?
What if we made it approve it tonight, but make it contingent on him at some point getting accurate measurements for our files? Maybe in the springtime, when it's easier to measure where the Warner line is.
Madam Chair, could we make a condition, the approval to be that, before the CEO has issued, that a detailed drawing showing...
Typically, you don't make those kinds of conditions with variances.
The problem is trying to... I mean, we make conditions in good faith a lot.
Sarah, can you talk into your microphone?
We make conditions in good faith a lot, but implementing those conditions is sometimes a disappointing experience.
I fully agree. And I think if it was, I think if it was, you know, if it was living space and we were encroaching, obviously, we'd be in a much different situation completely, but eve overhangs, encroaching another 10 inches, I agree with Suzanne, you know, the applicant needs to have, you know, the 50-foot setback line notated on the actual drawing, but I would, you know, my belief is that's something that we could have him do and make it a condition, and give a temporary, you know, give a conditional approval based on that.
So, Suzanne, would you be... are you... would you be willing to allow the applicant to take care of that while we listen to the next case and have him come back at the end of the night with the proper paperwork?
Give me a second to think about that. To scale, right?
Using the scale that's on this one?
I have a mechanic's scale in my bag.
I don't know about that.
It does 10 to 1.
The thing that troubles me, and it goes back to the process, as I said, we lowered the bar, and Tavis, you picked up on this, but you didn't follow through. It says, "A final plan shall provide the planning department, including the property owner's name and address," and that "the linear encroachment of the overhang shall be added to the zoning board of appeals plan and incorporated as part of the approval." You don't do those things after the fact, that's supposed to be handed in to us so that we can proceed to approve, to prove a plan.
Okay, so, there's a motion and a second on the floor, so why don't we vote on that, and then we can move forward?
Yeah, I've got a long ride home still.
What are you going to do?
So, Suzanne made a motion to continue this to February 5, and Sarah seconded it.
What is the board asking the applicant for? Do you want a surveyed plan? Do you want a scaled septic plan?
I think we...
No, I said I've lowered the bar not to have him do an engineered, surveyed, licensed plan.
Correct, you said that the board didn't.
To allow him to come in with a proper drawing, 11 by 17, that lays out the dimensions.
Yeah, I know you said that, I'm wondering what the board is asking for.
That's what... that... well, wait, we haven't gotten that far. I've made a motion to continue, and then we'll outline the things that he has to come in with.
But we haven't voted yet.
Because there's more than just that.
Okay, so...
More discussion, or are we done?
I think we should vote on Suzanne's motion, and then move forward, Chuck?
No.
Kate?
No.
I'm a no.
Oh, that's a cop-out.
I'm not done yet.
Oh, yes.
I'll vote yes, but I also want to add the fact that if he was advised, coming into I, I can see why he gave whatever he thought he was supposed to be giving us, and if a part of the application in there that has all the information is needed about a survey drawing wasn't explained to him, I can... I severely think that he was at a disadvantage.
I think the process is disadvantaged to the applicants. Luke?
You sat Kate, right, so she voted, so...
It's a... no, 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 yes, yes.
Then there's five, right, you have five right there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
You don't get to vote. You weren't there at the meeting, and you want to be to...
Correct.
To sit Kate for this. Would you mind sitting for this hearing?
I'd be delighted.
Correct.
She would be delighted to sit, and you already voted, so... So, it's 1 to... 3 to 2, no, that doesn't pass, and I would like to make a motion. I would like to motion that the applicant return to us at the end of the evening with a scaled drawing showing the setback to the shore, and the number of feet that is being encroached on, and that we continue the hearing, his hearing, after we hear the hearing that's waiting.
That's that linear feet.
Linear feet, and linear feet of encroachment, and distance to the shore, and how close the house is.
So, how far the house is set in within the boundary?
You need to draw the 50-foot line on the...
On what? What map is he going to use for reference?
You're going to help him with that.
He could use... he could scale off with the tax card, he can scale off that drawing, the septic drawing, that would be, he scales off the tax map and checks the scale on that, and comes up with a tax card, and comes up with a scale on that, he can use that.
I suspect this is actually 1 to 20, but he'll check that with a dimension on the tax card that we know for sure what it is. Are you confused about something? What is it?
I don't know what he's being asked to do, or why I'm being asked to help him do it.
Because there's only one copy of this? It'd be nice if you would make him a copy or two that he could draw on? Are you clear?
I think I understand.
Okay, that's my motion. Okay, that's my motion.
Draw the 50-foot setback, and then I need to scale the corner of the building to the water to show how, how far within the setback it is.
I'm willing to second that, but before I do, I said I had a long drive home. Do you want to wait?
If this prevents a whole nother evening, then I would, I'm here tonight, but.
Okay, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Okay, thank you. Would you please help him with that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
But I think it should be noted that it's unfortunate.
If you want to sit downstairs, I can bring you down there.
...a disadvantage because it wasn't given proper instructions.
Right, and I think it's important that we go and take a look at the application instructions and make sure they don't conflict with the zoning.
That's not our job. That's what the plan is hired to do.
Yeah, that's true. But, so that means we can't rely on them. Neither can the applicants.
This is totally irregular, what happened tonight.
Yep, it is.
No, I agree. It is, but I think we're just trying to be reasonable. It's a, I think what we're doing is reasonable under the circumstances.
Well, here's the thing, there's five of us, you know, some feel this way, some feel that way.
Sure.
And because there's five, we hopefully end up in the middle someplace, and that's the way it is.
Yes, I think we did.
The thing that happens-
We need Luke back, by the way.
The thing that happens is it puts us in a position that we shouldn't have to be in.
Agree.
And worse than that, the applicant gets jerked around.
Is what?
The applicant gets jerked around.
Yes.
And it's not right.
And the ZBA has made attempts to speak with the powers to be to try to up the level of quality of instruction applicants and gotten nowheres. And personally, I get a little discouraged that the ZBA gets credit for someone-
Discredited.
Discredited, not credit.
Well, no, they give us credit. They're saying, oh, the ZBA did it. But we are discredited in the end, but it's-
All right, let's take a deep breath.
Okay, case number two. Clerk, would you mind reading?
She did.
We did during-
She did.
No, I mean, reading.
Oh, yes. Granite State Adaptive, 5 Jennifer Circle, Tax Map 188-028. Case number 01SE24, public hearing for special exception under Article 12, Section 175-82A. Farm agriculture, farming and the Wolfboro planning and zoning ordinance to allow for construction of an agricultural therapeutic equine facility slash farming. No submission, public hearing. Site visit was held at 2:30. That was already read into the record.
Okay, whoever's presenting, okay, great. You are.
One second. Yes. Okay. Good evening, members of the board. I'm Brian Walsh with Horizons Engineering. I'm here with Jennifer Frazier, our client and a Tufton Borough resident. This application is a special exception to permit Granite State Adaptive to construct an agricultural barn and horseback riding area on their property located at 5 Jennifer Circle, behind the Lakeview Cemetery and near the wastewater treatment facility. Parcel is 25 acres and zoned residential. It lies in the manufactured housing overlay district and in the wetland conservation district portions of the lot. The proposed agricultural use is a 501(c)(3) charity, nonprofit, targeted toward people with disabilities. Horseback riding is a therapeutic exercise for persons with a wide range of physical, emotional, and cognitive disabilities. This offers a clean, safe area for this activity. The project received conditional approval from the planning board for site plan approval with one condition being obtaining a special exception for the proposed use. Initially, we believed it was a permitted use. As detailed in the application, it is our position that we have satisfied all eight conditions that would allow the ZBA to grant the special exception for this use. The owner held a neighborhood meeting prior to the planning board meeting, and the neighborhood was in full support of the project. I'm happy to answer any questions before handing it off to Jen to share some slides.
I did notice that statement that originally you thought it was a permitted use. What was that permitted use that you thought it was, you know?
I don't.
I don't either. That's why I was asking.
Yep.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what she said. Could you come to the mic, please, just identify yourself?
So we originally thought it was a permitted use, missing the special exception piece, but for exactly what we're asking, which is agriculture. And in the Wolfboro Town zoning under residential, it cites certain legislature by the state of New Hampshire, which specifically recognizes horses, therapeutic riding, not, excuse me, not therapeutic riding, horses riding instruction, enjoying the farm environment, and interacting with UNH cooperative extension. So we have a 4-H program as well. So it was getting the special exception that we didn't realize was required.
I'm sorry, do you have a question?
I do.
Move closer to your mic, please.
I have a question. The application for the special exception, does that apply to the whole 24.9 acres?
Correct.
Because a lot of that is forest and woods, right?
Right.
Right, okay, okay.
All righty. Want to continue, or did you, are you done?
How about he goes through these eight criteria?
Okay.
Should I go forward or do we do it?
We have a slideshow.
Sure, let's do it.
You can just read them if you want.
Well, we have a slideshow.
We have a slideshow that we wanted to share.
We don't know how to do that.
Yeah, Tim will do it.
We have the passports in the town hall. I can get them for you. I don't have passports.
We need Tavis. While we wait, I don't know what the order is of events here. We do have some neighbors, we do have some people that would like to speak on our behalf. Would you like that to happen after the slideshow or while we're waiting to start that?
You could, you could read your application notes right off the page, so it'll be read into the record.
Do you have the application?
We haven't really opened it.
Oh, okay.
Go through the criteria.
Yeah.
You haven't opened the public hearing?
Oh, she didn't?
Didn't hear.
Well, the public hearing is open because they're presenting. There we go. We do have a lot of letters, and we've read them all, so to the point that we're happy to hear from some of the neighbors, I think we have a lot of information and support.
Do you have a copy of this? Do you have a copy?
Yes, yeah, that's the, the eight criteria. I can proceed with that.
Yeah.
Okay. Would you like me to read it in full Q and A style?
Please, because the TV people don't have a copy of it. The board members do, but the people watching it do not.
Okay.
You could just share that.
Let's start with number one.
Facts supporting the request. Number one, site suitability. That the specific site is an appropriate location for the proposed use or structure. This includes A, adequate usable space, adequate access, absence of environmental constraints, floodplain, steep slopes, et cetera. Our response is, based on the layout, which we have depicted on the accompanying proposed conditions site plan, Sheet 204 before you, you can see that the site is suitable for proposed use. The site is 25 acres in size and is not visible from any abutting property, demonstrating adequate usable space and adequate access. There are no steep slopes, and we have identified jurisdictional wetlands, which we only impact in an existing location for driveway widening. There are no floodplains or other restrictions to the site. Number two, immediate neighborhood impact. That the proposal is not detrimental, injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the abutting properties in particular and to the neighborhood in general. Typical impacts which extend beyond the proposed site include excessive trip generation, noise or vibration, dust, glare, heat, smoke, fumes, gas, or odors, inappropriate hours of operation. Our response, this project as proposed will not have a detrimental impact on the surrounding and neighboring properties. Several abutters spoke in favor of the project at the planning board hearing, and others signed a document supporting the proposal. Allowing the proposal use within the residentially zone district will not create excessive trip generation, although there is likely to be an increase, which would not be excessive. The only noise created as a result of this proposal will be vehicular parking and farm equipment, which is similar in noise level to residential use. The riding arena is enclosed, which will minimize any noise associated with that use. The location of the use is well removed from surrounding homes. It will not produce at dust levels, it will not produce dust levels at any level greater than residential use. The lighting approved by the planning board is full shield cutoffs, eliminating any glare potential. The use will produce no heat, smoke, fumes, gas, or greater than a residential use. The barn has been oriented to address prevailing winds, to control any odors, and for energy efficiency, and the facility is employing a state-of-the-art ASP airtight static pile composting system to accelerate the composting of manure, thereby minimizing any odor to prevent them from becoming injurious to the surrounding areas. With the exception of animal care, the hours of operation will not extend beyond 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Program hours will typically be 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Number three, that there will be no undue nuisance or serious hazard to pedestrian or vehicular traffic, including the location and design of accessways and off-street parking. Our response, the use for which the exception is being sought shall have access on sides, and the access has been reviewed and approved by the fire department. Access and maneuvering aisles have been designed to accommodate both emergency vehicles and the occasional delivery of hay, shavings, and other supplies. Therefore, the proposed use will not be a nuisance or serious hazard to pedestrians or vehicular traffic because they are used to the existing traffic patterns. The vehicles used on the property will be pickup trucks, horse trailer, cargo trailers, 40 to 70 horsepower tractor, and attachments, and a utility vehicle. Number four, availability of public services and facilities. That the following services and facilities are available and adequate to serve the needs of the use designed and proposed: sewer, water, stormwater, fire protection, streets, parks, schools. Response, the use will be serviced by municipal water and one on-site sewage disposal system. There is ample room for stormwater drainage, as evidenced with the accompanying plan. As stated above, the maneuvering area will be sufficient for fire trucks to gain access as well as other police and emergency vehicles. Fire protection will be addressed during the building permit process, but given the fact that the municipal water system has an easement that passes through this property, suitable water supply is available to meet the needs of use. This use as a therapeutic equine facility supports the schools as a number of special needs students make use of this organization's services in its existing location, and moving it close to town will enhance their ability to support the schools. Number five, appropriateness of site plan consideration shall be given to the following: parking scheme, traffic circulation, open space, fencing, landscaping, signage, commercial vehicles, light impact. To address site plan appropriateness, the parking, traffic, and open space have been designed in accordance with Wolfboro's site plan regulations, and we received conditional site plan approval from the planning board for this facility on December 5, 2023, with one of the conditions being a special exception for the use after the planning board determined the use required a special exception. Number six, immediate neighborhood integrity. That the uses established use patterns be weighed with recent change trends in the neighborhood. Response, historically, this site was part of Poor Hill Farm. The property has large open areas ideal for pastoring the horses, suitable for this use. Every effort, every effort has been made to the site, to cite the structures away from the surrounding residential homes, making the use difficult, if not impossible, to see unless you enter the property. The owners have held neighborhood meetings in which support for the use expressed in testimony and written documentation of that support was given at the planning board hearing where conditional site approval was granted. Number seven, impact on property values that the proposed use will not cause or contribute to a decline in property values of adjacent properties. Response, given the manner in which this project has been designed and the use cited, the proposed use will not diminish adjacent properties' values. This opinion, and this opinion is demonstrated by the support of adjacent property owners and the lack of objections from them. Number eight, the proposed use or structure is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance and the intent of the master plan. Response, since the Town zoning code allows by special exception the proposed use, this proposed use meets the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and master plan. Specifically, the proposed use aligns with the master plan in the following ways. Provides quality year-round economic and recreational opportunities for people of all ages and abilities. Wherever feasible, support new and expanded facilities and projects by public-private partnerships. Continue to evaluate demographic trends to see if additional facilities are needed in the future. Specialized healthcare, education, and a desirable year-round community for families and households of all ages and income levels. The economic strength of the community has improved due to high-quality educational facilities, the sustainability of existing and new businesses, increased healthcare opportunities, and more cultural and recreational activities. Identify ways/plan to engage businesses with students, service projects, internships, job training programs, and to include representation from medical, education, hospitality, and service entities. That is all.
Thank you.
I'm Jen Frazier. Lived here quite a while. Graduated from Kingswood Regional High School in 1980. Raised my family here, and honored to be here presenting this to you, hopefully do something positive for our community. So behind you I have, it's a PDF. I meant to submit a PowerPoint, but in my stressful afternoon, just so that you can get familiar with who we are. Granite State Adaptive is a 501(c)(3) charity. What we're proposing on 5 Jennifer Circle is a therapeutic riding program, and we are members of PATH International, so that you can have an understanding of the standard of care and services that we provide. PATH is Professional Association of Therapeutic Horsemanship. Our targeted outreach is to physically and developmentally disabled youth and adults, disabled veterans, and at-risk youth. I would say our wheelhouse is primarily school age and slightly older disabled individuals. Our vision is an accessible world where communities support individuals regardless of ability to reach their full potential. And our mission is to empower individuals, especially those with disabilities, at-risk youth and veterans, to develop independence, confidence, life skills, and fitness through adaptive sports, therapy, training, and recreation sustained by community engagement. We have discovered that our equestrian program is very significant in our community. What we do with our horses is work with veterans, first responders, offering wellness opportunities. We use equines to provide therapeutic experiences. We teach adaptive riding, which is horseback riding lessons, but making the adaptations needed for children with autism or someone with a disability to be successful. We have a 4-H program, and we have an incredible population of volunteers in our community of all ages who- of all ages who participate in our program and also learn through their experiences with us. I know there was a question about, you know, standards, and that's why I mentioned that we're a center and individual members of PATH International. Our riding instructors are certified therapeutic riding instructors. But something that not many people know about is we're members of Equis International. And Equis International is a public charity. It's the only national animal welfare charity and accrediting body in the United States that is 100% dedicated to the dual mission of protecting America's horses. Sorry, we lost a horse this week, so. So we became guardians through Equis. They, guardians are organizations on the equine welfare network that demonstrate a commitment to public transparency by their willingness to make comprehensive data about their programs, healthcare practices, and governance. We're also transparent as a nonprofit with GuideStar, and we have received the highest rating of transparency. Who do we work with? The Children's Center, the Hope House, local school kids come for community service. As I mentioned, we partner with UNH to run a 4-H program. The Manchester VA finds veterans in our community that need our services, and we work with other organizations to provide services in our equine program. What you may not know is that we were awarded a $1 million grant from Northern Border Regional Commission, and Northern Border is a state/federal partnership that is Maine, New Hampshire, Maine, New Hampshire, Vermont, and New York, and it is part of the governor's office. Each state has their own office, and the applicants are scrutinized by the state and then they go before the four governors. So out of 187 applicants for this specific project in Wolfboro, New Hampshire, Northern Border awarded us $1 million to build this equestrian facility. And our community is also in support of this, and our Northern Border grant required a $1 million match, and we were able to get the $1 million match because that's how valued this program is in the Wolfboro community. So that's where it is. That's an aerial view. When we were doing the site visit, you could see, you can see the house obviously in the upper left-hand corner, you could really see to that line of trees, but there's another little beautiful open area past that. So the site is really perfect for this. There's a site plan of the barn on the property so you can get an idea about how much distance there is away from neighbors, and then the forested area is at the top. That's 20 acres of forest in there. Static airtated composting, I thought I should mention that composting takes place in 30 to 60 days, so it's very community-friendly, and that can be returned to the soil or maybe be provided to the community for gardens somehow. There's a proposed picture of what the barn will look like. And I think I have more, but that's not what, oh, well, there's some pictures of our students and what we do. Thank you.
That wasn't me. It's all for me. I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Would anybody like to start with questions?
Well, special exception is the easiest thing to get compared to a variance, so you're ahead of the game there. I think Jim did a good job laying all of it out with good mapping. I don't have a whole lot of questions. I did listen to the tape of the planning board's site discussion. The one thing that they could have perhaps, or maybe they did and I didn't catch it, they could have been a little stronger on, where is it? And maybe you can answer it tonight. I think number five, probably if you go through it on your map, might be helpful, and that was your parking, any traffic circulation, open space is pretty obvious. Fencing, I think that was the green, was that the green line all the way around on the map?
Tree line, most likely.
The green on the map?
Probably tree line.
Oh, is that the tree line?
Yep.
Okay, so fencing, signage, we're gonna have a sign out at the end of the road.
We would just comply with whatever the town's sign. We don't feel a need to have excessive signage. We were just gonna comply with whatever the town's, I can't remember if they're like two feet, two by two, or something like that. We're not asking for, to change that.
So if you would take that paper on number five and just give us an overview of those items as to how they apply to your site.
What are we referring to?
Number five, appropriateness of site plan. You'd like us to go through it again?
Parking.
Parking?
Yeah.
Parking has been met. We had this passed through the site plan approval process. We have a minimum amount of parking spaces. We exceed that, I believe it's seven, and we provide 12.
What is that based on? Square footage, or, I mean, where does that minimum number come from?
I'd have to revisit the site plan.
It was researched based on similar facilities like horse boarding facilities, and then we exceeded that with also adding handicap accessible spots. There's also parking by the house. So we've exceeded the number.
Tavis, was there something in the ordinance that, like, what is that similar to that was chosen for that? Because I'm sure there isn't a line specifically for horse boarding.
I think it's, there's a, what's it called, the study that's done?
Traffic study? I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I know that with the site plan application, we have a section called parking and circulation. I'd be happy to read it.
Does that answer my question?
May.
Okay.
May provide more clarity. Parking and circulation, the proposal plans for the total of 12 parking spaces, eight are required, four of which will be handicapped accessible given the nature of the proposed use. Three spaces are located at the existing residence which will serve as the manager's home and office, seven spaces, five standard and two handicap accessible on the north side of the access to the barn and just west of the stable, and two accessible spaces adjacent to the stable. We have worked with the fire department to develop circumferential access around the proposed barn and for emergency purposes. The parking dimensions and travel ways comply with Wolfboro regulations.
Right, so it says eight required, but that doesn't explain like how they determined that eight were required. And I'll get into why that brings up a question for me after Suzanne's done talking.
Well, the thing of it is, is they've got conditional approval for the site plan pending the outcome of what we do tonight. And I didn't want to go into the engineering aspects of parking and circulation. I just wanted you to take your pointer and just show on the map how some of these things are gonna actually happen.
Absolutely. We were on-site yesterday.
Because we don't have the paperwork that the planning board had, and I'm not interested in going into the specifics. I'd just like a general, just a general statement and overview of the traffic circulation. I heard them say at the planning board they're gonna have the shielded nightlights, so there won't be any impact from that. I'm not interested in redoing what they did, I'm just interested in you just sort of showing us with your pointer, okay, so here's where the parking's gonna be, we know where the open space is, we can tell by looking at the map. Any fencing or screening, you know, where are you gonna put that? Is it gonna be around the building? Just some general terminology of those items under number five.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Highlighted in orange is the access road entering the site, and as I mentioned, fire circulation around the building. Where we were standing earlier today at our site visit was here, three parking spaces near the manager's office. There is a pull-through here. There's five parking spaces and two parking spaces here, and two parking spaces here. The two and the two have a shared handicap striped area in between for van-accessible use, full ADA compliance. Fencing. The green line you mentioned before is the proposed tree line where it meets the existing tree line in places. There's minimal clearing as you saw on-site today, it's very open area. There's several different riding areas, each with their own fence. Fencing surrounding the property was not something proposed. There's a lot of woods in this area, there's full visual screening from all the butters with wooded area, and.
Can I just add something?
Yeah, sure.
So this?
Take the microphone.
Oh. So the pasture fencing is still being completely worked out. We have a path around here, and the fencing for the pastures is in here with a fence around here. We're not proposing fencing in the forest.
Yeah.
You know, we're proposing just fencing in this. It's also for the safety of the horses as well as the people. This barn has individual turnouts. Sometimes a horse has a Dutch door and it just gets turned out there. The riding arena is the indoor riding arena, but there's also kind of a natural space out here that might be, that we propose fencing in where horses will be ridden. So these are more like, you know, two or three horses at a time turnout, these four fenced areas.
Thank you. That's it for me. All right, so I guess, so I guess in a bigger picture what I'm seeing is, I don't think there's any issue or question that you're, you know, what you accomplish and what you do is really outstanding. What I see is that the approval as an equine facility with state law and with our zoning, there is no difference between equine facility and therapeutic equine facility, it's all equine facility. So you're very focused on what you do and you know the scope and the scale of your activities because you do that, and I can kind of envision know what your scope and scale of activity is by what you've told us. But should we approve this as an equine facility, and in 20 years it gets sold to anybody else who wants to run an equine facility, they can have much, much more activity than you're proposing, because I don't see any scoping or scaling of what you're doing in your proposal. So I can only, I can kind of make a guess, well, there's eight parking spaces, so there's only gonna be so much activity, but that's not, that's not binding for the next property owner. So there could be, there could be training, boarding, horse shows, I mean, our approval opens the door for all equine activities, and that's what I'm concerned about with regard to the impact on the neighborhood. So can you speak to that?
Absolutely. The special exception we're requesting here tonight is for the use of agricultural in a residential zone. Per RSA Section 2134(a), the definition of farm slash agricultural is riding instruction of equine and equine facility. Based on those definitions, this is an agricultural use, we're looking for special exception for agricultural use.
Yep, and I agree that you are doing an agricultural use. When we get to our special exception, we're looking at impact on the neighborhood. I don't think your impact is gonna be anything more than what you're envisioning. Again, if we make an approval for this, we're not just approving what your vision is, we're approving any equine facility that decides to come in there 30 years from now and have horse shows on Saturday morning with 20 trailers turning into Lake View Ave. So my question is, if, should we give this approval, how do we, how do we judge what the impact to the neighborhood is going to be forever without knowing, without anything in your paperwork that says this is the scope of our activity that we're doing or that we're proposing to do?
Well, Northern Borders will have their hand on it for 20 years, so it's not gonna be sold anytime soon.
And I know 20 years, I mean, things are, it's gonna be here forever.
I was just joking.
It's gonna be here forever.
Yeah, so obviously, the reason we're doing this is for sustainability, that we want to be able to provide this service in our community for a long, long time that lives beyond my years, and it's not that big of a facility. So typical boarding facilities, like a Hunter Jumper facility is 100 by 200. Our arena is 80 by 150. The barn, we are proposing eight stalls. There are more stalls, but one is a wash stall, one is a grooming stall, and two are storage, because we're not storing hay in the barn because it's not really healthy, it's also not such a great, you know, as far as fire, so we're proposing storing hay in a separate building. So it's not even that big of a facility, so it wouldn't lend itself to being showgrounds. There's not even an outdoor.
What I see though is there's lots of room for changes over time. There's room to, you know, increase the buildings, the stalls, the riding arenas, there's a whole, you know, forested area that could be increased for that use. And there's, you know, our approval of just an equine facility with no, nothing in your application that scopes the quantity of activity that's going to, that you perceive is going to go on. I mean, we know that you have, you know, you have eight horses and the amount of activity you have is very, very limited, but our approval allows for any kind of activity. So how would you mitigate that?
The tack room isn't big, I mean, you, someone would have to go through the process of coming to the town at another building to do what you're proposing.
Right, but that's just a site plan, it's not a special exception. The special exception is already granted, so building another building is permitted. A new site plan would be required, but that's permitted, that's just the process, it's not an approval. What do you have to say?
You won't be sorry I'm weighing in on this. The idea that the approval we give tonight is for anything else that happens after that is incorrect. is incorrect. We need to state specifically, if we approve this, what it's for. If they make any kind of, or want to make any kind of change for a large expansion, then they'll have to come back.
What in the paperwork says that?
Because we're going to say what they get approved for tonight. That will be per that plan, per the planning board's approval for their site plan, and nothing else. We can't make an approval based on a hypothetical what-if 20 years from now. We don't do that.
So, you're saying that, so you're saying that we are going to approve the site plan with our approval, not just our approval with the site plan? Like, you know how we've, we've taken the approved site plan, and we have put it in our approval so that there's enforcement allowances through the zoning approval, not just through the site plan approval?
I don't follow...
You don't remember that?
And I don't follow what you're saying. I think, I think you, you're reading too much into this. They've presented a plan. We're going to say, if we approve it, it's per the plan dated such-and-such date, that was approved by the planning board on such-and-such date, and they meet all the requirements of one through eight, with any conditions we see that we need to attach to it.
What is the remedy for your concern, Audrey?
That, the remedy would be some language in the application or in the testimony that scopes the amount of activity that is...
Well, it says it.
Where does it say?
It says it right on Jason's paperwork, page three. Your request for a permit to specifically use, construct agricultural therapeutic equine facility farming.
So, what...
That's it.
What, what, what amount of activity does that sentence tell you it is?
It will be per that plan.
So, eight stalls?
Yeah.
So, they could only have eight people parking, and they can't have more activity than, than those parking spaces?
No, if they, if they make a change of use...
Sarah wants to have something to say.
Well, I'm not done. If they make a change of use that affects, a change of use is allowed if it's the same, like a candy store to a postcard store, sales of postcards, sales of candy. That's allowed as long as it doesn't affect the exterior. This happens to be mostly an exterior use. Once they go to change that to be this hypothetical three-ring circus, they, they would have to come back to the board, for which, for which they are allowed agricultural, they are allowed a training or center, a riding instruction center. But that isn't what they asked for. What they asked for is very specific.
I don't think, I personally don't think that legally there's any difference between a therapeutic equine facility and an equine facility. I think you'd have a very hard time making that argument. Sarah?
Yeah. My question is for Audrey. Are you looking for like a limit, like they'd never have more than 15 horses ever, or something like that, that would be a constraint on their approval? Is that what you're looking for? So that there would be some type of a description of the scale?
Scent mark, yes. A description, and, and I don't mean it to be real constrictive. I just want it to, in the approval, not have a much bigger impact on the neighborhood than we are approving. That's, that's what I'm looking at. You know, coming in for, with a very dense neighborhood, down a public road, onto a private road, and your use is not, I don't believe is going to impact that badly. Somebody else using that property, having a much higher rate of use, could. And I don't think that they would have to come back because it's the same use, it's an equine facility. There'd be no change of use with regard to that.
Well, let's just understand something else. And I don't know legally how to say this, but agriculture in the state of New Hampshire is, is a protected right, so to speak.
Absolutely.
I mean, you've got residential, you've got commercial, you've got industrial. Agricultural rises to the surface.
Mm-hmm.
And, and you don't have to even put it in your ordinance. It's not like, you know, we have permissive zoning. It's not like that. Agricultural, people are just allowed to do agricultural use.
Except for here.
No, except...
It's required to have a special exception, which is why we're here. It's not an open book because it's in a residential neighborhood.
Audrey, I do not think that legally you can put parameters that they can only have eight horses in the hours between 6:00 in the morning and 6:00 at night.
Well, they've already said that they're limiting their hours, so that's a self-inflicted parameter.
The planning board has approved this site plan, pending on the outcome of our approval. I am not interested in putting any conditions on this other than what is the state and federal and the two conditions.
I, I don't think the planning board looked at, was approving, they were looking at site items. They weren't approving that, you know, they could have two rings or, you know, one indoor riding arena, or only eight stalls. That wasn't part of their approval at all.
It wasn't necessary. Could the land support what they were asking to do? And the answer was, according to the planning board, yes.
Yeah, it could support a lot more.
If, in order to address your concern, wouldn't the vision of like a worst-case scenario, horse shows every Saturday morning, wouldn't that be a commercial use rather than, wouldn't that be a commercial?
This, this is, this is...
Agricultural.
It still would be.
Read the statute, and it has quite a broad meaning.
Okay.
And quite a broad allowed uses.
But that doesn't mean agricultural is not necessarily commercial. It could be commercial agricultural.
Talk to your legislature.
I was actually there when this was written, in the room. Do you have any idea what I'm trying to say?
I understand your concerns about someday, maybe, but someday, maybe, that could have been 15 house lots or something else.
It probably still could be.
Probably still could be. So, I think this is an incredible asset to our community. I think the risk of what you're, you know, I understand your concerns. They're my concerns, too. I want to preserve this outdoor space. This is an incredible property that is surrounded by Wolfboro property.
How, how do you propose to do that? How do you propose to preserve it after you're, after you're not there?
Well, I'm going to be here for a while.
I understand that. I am, too.
Because the whole point of this is for us to be sustainable, and that's why we're coming before you, and that's why we're asking our community to invest so much money into this property. It's not so we can flip it, like this can not be sold.
Trust me, I, I have all the faith in what you, what you believe you're doing. I'm not saying that you're going to flip it, or sell it, or, or do anything like that. I think your, you know, your, your program is just exceptional.
Thank you.
I just, I know, I see some realities down the road.
Well, it's 25 acres, and we, we're very deliberate about the site plan for the best interest of the horses, and the humans, and the neighborhood, and the community. We avoided wetlands. So, it is not our intention to turn this into a show facility. This is a community facility to serve our...
So, can you, can you say in, in words, because it's not in here, what, what is the, on a busy day, what does, what does your facility look like?
So, on a busy day, you mean how many people are going to come in and out of the property? So, I tried to come up with that number. So, originally, it was 15 house lots, and the present level of activity, because we have eight horses right now, is one to three staff, which is six trips. One to four volunteers, which is eight trips, and six participants, so maybe 20 trips. At, at maximum growth, we may, in time, reach a point where we have the following numbers, four staff, eight volunteers. Now, we don't have everybody there at the same time. You know, the, the thing about this facility, it's, it's a controlled, quiet space.
Yeah.
So, we're not having all these people show up at once on the property.
Well, I don't think this is a lot, but what was this done for, this slide here?
It was done in case this question came up. But I didn't know if you were talking about traffic, or you were talking about future buildings when you were asking me.
Well, I think, they go hand in hand, really, right? Your, your program organically keeps it small because of your program.
Yeah, because sometimes you lose quality when things get too big.
So, would you be willing to include this slide in your approval?
Sure.
That's basically all I'm looking for.
Okay.
And, and you can be generous with it. I don't, you know, if, if, I'm hoping that you're looking for the biggest, best thing that you think you can, your program can handle with this slide.
Mm-hmm. I was just trying to be, so I'm a physical therapist, and numbers are like a, a thing, and they've got to be measurable and attainable. So, I really was trying to, there's also, there's also rules about how much a horse can be used in a day with our standards, right? A horse cannot be used more than three hours a day. It can be somewhere, but not under our care. So, I was trying to come up with the appropriate number for that. So, that is an estimate. I mean, if you're saying, could I expand that number, or do you want to use that number as it is? That's what I'm, that's what I'm anticipating, is a realistic goal for us.
So, I mean, that, that's exactly the kind of scoping and quantification that I think would, you know, would make me comfortable. And if for some reason down the road it got much bigger, then it would need to come back for a reviewed special exception with bigger parameters, because that would be in the approval.
Yeah, that's fair.
Do you guys feel comfortable with that?
Well, basically, you've just defeated your own argument, because that's what I've been trying to say. If they change the scope of that and build another barn and hold whatever, they're going to have to come back. That's a given. You don't have to make that as a condition to attach the slide.
Well, I, I don't agree. So, can we just do both? I mean, is it a problem?
Well, I, I think it's very unusual, but you know, even though we read...
I actually would have expected this in the application.
We've read all the letters, but maybe there's one or two spokesperson that would like to speak.
Sure. Chuck, do you have something to say?
Just have a quick question. Can we approve this for therapeutic equine use only?
I don't think so. I think that that would probably not pass the lawyers, because therapeutic equine farm is the same as an equine farm. There's no difference.
There's no legal difference?
I don't think so.
Honestly, if it were, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
If it were a boarding facility, you'd have less traffic. If it's a show facility, would be one thing, but an actual boarding facility, you'd have people that own their own horse, they were the only people coming to ride it. So, I, I agree with you that an equestrian facility is, whether it's for people with disabilities, therapeutic or not, it's, it's probably the same language. That's kind of along the American Disabilities Act language, is not to separate. But we're telling our story, that's what we do.
This is, this is, Chuck, this is what they, this is what they've asked for, that the code enforcement officer felt was appropriate, entitling it, construct agricultural therapeutic equine facility slash farming. That's the, the big knot of this whole discussion. If they were to expand it to horse shows and circuses, I don't know, you name it, bring in all the horses, all types and sizes and stuff, they'll have to come back.
Using that language, wouldn't they be restricted to just therapeutic equine use?
I think that's a question of law that we can't rely on.
Well, but we're not lawyers, and you're sitting here saying that you think that there is, is a difference between what they're asking for and what you're envisioning may happen in 20 years when they expand. They're getting, if we approve it, they would get permission for just this, as stated, per the plan, approved by the planning board, and nothing else. When they, when and if they fall on hard times and they need to do something else in the realm of horses, they'll have to come back to the town.
Well...
And we're not lawyers, so you and I are sitting on different sides of the fence of this. I'm very comfortable in going with what's on their application and what I just said in the plans. I'm not interested in putting any kinds of conditions.
So, you could, you can vote no on the conditions, then?
I will.
Okay. Does anybody else want to talk about any other aspect of this? Sarah?
Okay. This is shameless advertising. I'm chairman of the Agriculture Commission.
Oh, yeah.
On February 1st, we are having Barbara Comtois, who is a state legislature, coming to talk to us at the library at 6:45 PM about items of interest at the state legislature, and if anybody has anything they would like to have clarified on what they have in the current legislation, that might be a good time to come join us.
All right, aside from that, how about...
Can, can I just, Luke, do you have anything you want to say?
No, I do not.
Chuck, do you have anything else you want to say?
Just had one other question. I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but the $1 million grant that you have obtained, are there any contingencies attached to that that are relevant to what we're discussing tonight?
No contingencies relative to what you're discussing, but there's plenty of steps that we have to take before we have a notice to proceed, including like environmental analysis and things like that. So, it's very, it's very heavily supervised and scrutinized, and yeah, they love this project. They think it's amazing. We're excited.
Thank you.
Kate, do you have anything you want to say at this point? So, can we open it up to some of the people in the audience?
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone that, anyone that may be kind of a spokesperson for the neighborhood, that we've read all your letters, we have them attached to our file, so we don't necessarily need everybody to speak, but...
They're a very patient member of the public.
She is. Hi, I'm Ashley LaRochelle from Wolfboro, from actually Three Jennifer Circle, right next door to the property. And this is my daughter. Do you want to introduce yourself? This is Natalie. So, Natalie was introduced to Granite State Adaptive through the Children's Center when she was in preschool, and it has been a wonderful program for her. And we decided to continue when she was no longer going with the Children's Center. Do you want to tell them your favorite horse?
Duke.
Duke, yeah. Duke is a great horse. So, when she started going independent of the Children's Center, my older daughter, who's 11, also fell in love with their program. So, Olivia also rides and participates in their 4-H program now as well. Did you want to tell them what you do on the horses?
I throw the rings.
So, she has to throw rings to a target, and it's been so supportive of Natalie. She's been diagnosed with ADHD, which is amazing that she's been able to sit here tonight. I'm so proud of her for making it through to share her turn here. But she is working so hard on being able to sustain attention, to control some impulses, and to see her on a horse is just, it's amazing what they're able to do and accomplish. My three-year-old can't wait for her turn, and my husband is a local veteran. He's participated in their veteran program.
Can I tell him what his name is?
Yes, you can say it.
Daddy.
Daddy, yes. So, my whole family's truly benefited from their programming, and we cannot wait to see them grow and see them expand. Right next door would be just a dream come true for our family. What do you think, Natalie? Can they move next door?
Yes.
So, that's why we stayed so long tonight. We just wanted to share our piece of...
Thank you for your patience.
Our excitement and all of the joy that Granite State Adaptive has brought to our family. So, thank you.
I'm Ray Osborne. I live at 33 Jennifer Circle, part of my property of Butts. I live at 33 Jennifer Circle, part of my property, a butts, the Granite State Adaptive property. We've been and visited the property where the proposed building is going up. We saw a presentation by Jennifer and her team. Very, very, very worthwhile project. We have no concerns. We're very supportive of it. My wife and I are both here just to show our support. And we hope you pass it through. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward? Great. Is anything, last thing you want to say before we close the public hearing?
No.
Nope?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Guess we'll close the public hearing.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Is there any other discussion amongst the board members with the public hearing closed? Okay.
Motion to approve case 01SE-24 MAP 188-0285 Jennifer Circle, per plan presented 1824, because I don't know what the date is on that, as approved by the planning board. For, for A, oh, in accordance, in accordance with Section 175-82A, for A, agricultural slash farming use for, for and and to construct an agricultural therapeutic equine facility slash farming.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
I would like to amend that.
Well, I just, I wasn't quite finished.
She just seconded it.
Yeah.
I'll take back my second if you wanted to.
Is there more? Okay.
I just wanted to put the plan as two conditions, which are, one, all federal, state, and local permits to be received, including but not limited to town of Wolfboro building permit approval. Tavis, precedent? That should be precedent.
No, that's fine. Building permit would be subsequent to the-
Subsequent or precedent? Which one? Precedent before they build, right?
Before they get a building permit, they're going to comply with all of the state and federal permits.
Okay. And two, the notice of decision shall be recorded to Carroll County Registry of Deeds, and the applicant shall bear the responsibility for payment of all recording fees. That's my total motion.
Okay, I'll second that again.
I'd like to amend the motion by including the slide that was shown that we can identify as, does it have a title?
Traffic/Activity at the Farm.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry.
By the slide titled Traffic Activity at the Farm. So- Yes. So, is there a second for the proposed amendment? I know you won't. Does anybody else want to? I guess not. Okay, so that fails. Back to the original motion. Roll call, Luke?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you.
You have your rule.
Thank you.
If it's helpful, the entire slideshow will be hard copy and part of the file. So, if it becomes a question later of expansion, that will be utilized.
Really?
In fact, side note, I believe there's even statutorily a requirement that if there's a site plan with a condition of a special exception, if the site plan is modified, then the zoning board also is-
I can't hear.
Asked to comment, not required to comment, to see if their approval would be modified. But that's a horse for a different day.
Okay, could we go back to case number, the first case this evening? Can you come forward, please? I am reopening this case number, well, we didn't close it, but we're continuing discussion on the case.
No, it's not much in there either.
Where is my, where is my case? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Can we kind of keep it down till we can finish this case here? Clerk, could you please remind us which case this is? I've lost my sheet.
Brent S. Rushforth, QPR TRT 50%, Maryland R. Rushforth, QPR TRT 60%, 42 Worcester Island Road, tax map number 258-15, case number 10-B-2023, public hearing for variance under Chapter 175, Section 43A1I of the Wolfboro Planning and Zoning Ordinance to Allow Variance for Encroachment into Setback. Formal submission, public hearing. Site visit was held at 3:00 PM today. It's all yours.
I'm trying to read it.
Well, he's got this dash line here.
Oh, there it is, okay.
This is a 50-foot line right here.
What is this? Oh, 45.
55 feet to this point right here. This is measured 38.
50 foot, okay, here it is, 50-foot setback.
Guys, just lean closer to the microphone.
He scaled it at 45 feet to that point. That says 32 feet to that point. He tape-measured it at 38 feet, somewhere in that vicinity. But that means that from here all the way around to here would violate the 50-foot.
Right.
Which is most of what he's doing.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Virtually all of it, I think.
Yeah, everything I'm doing is within it, but a lot of it is-
It's all right in the, right in this area here.
Yep.
Okay.
Did you contemplate the number of linear feet or was that on the original application? That, someplace I saw like 89.5 square feet.
Yeah, okay.
Linear, it's like 51, and then 40, 26, 21.
I haven't drawn out.
You know what? We have to do the findings.
It's on page six of your application at the very top. Yeah, I'd seen 89.5 square feet. It says 65 feet, 8 inches of linear roof.
That's it then, yeah. Because then, yeah, 26 and 15, 15, 5.
Great, thank you.
So, we also, so we have this now, and we also had the discussion about whether it had to be a licensed surveyor. And I, do we need to make a vote on that? Or are the acceptance of this would prove that to be the case?
I would accept it.
I argued my case and lost, so we're just going with that, I guess.
So, would somebody like to either make a motion or have more discussion?
Well, we haven't gone through the five criteria for variance.
Well, okay.
And you haven't opened the public hearing.
It's still open.
Oh, it's open?
We didn't close it.
Okay.
Well, Suzanne had said that, you know, pointed out that a variance is a tougher bar than a special exception. But when you look at the five criteria for the variance, it certainly seemed to be met by this particular proposal.
We have to go through each one of them.
Okay.
We do, and I wish I had my paper, but I don't, I don't know where it was. Here, you want to use this one?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Do you have your copies?
I don't think I actually got a copy. I think I handed in.
I can give you mine.
I'm happy to.
Here.
It's not in this pile, and this is the only other pile I've got. That, my, his application, my copy of his application, I have lost.
Didn't pick it up, did I?
No, that's mine.
I don't have it. Isn't that weird? Thank you. This might be it.
And you can read your paper.
Go right.
Yep.
All good. You want me to start with like the proposed use of the property? Or should I just start right at the variance request? Off of page six.
Write at number one.
Number one, all right. So, the variance will not be contrary to public interest because it's a seasonal residential home in need of rot repair. The overhangs will help to prevent further rot after the repairs have been done, hence fixing the problem.
It's seasonal?
Yeah, they close it down every year.
Oh, but it's got services like heat, right?
Yeah, yeah, it has electric heat, but they, they close it down, they drain down the wall.
So, it's actually a year-round house? They just don't use it?
Yeah. They use it seasonally, yeah. So, number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because the extension of the roof line will encroach further into the setback. So, I am encroaching. Number three, the substantial justice is done because the overhangs, once added, will protect the repaired building envelope and ensure longevity of the structure's integrity. The values of surrounding properties will not be diminished because this is merely conforming to what its neighboring. And then, five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship because the special conditions of this property that distinguish it from other properties in the area are as follows, and it has no overhangs leading to the deterioration of the building envelope on that section of the building. The rest of the building has overhangs. So, it would actually conform more with the rest of the building once the overhangs were applied.
So, working backwards, the number five, the hardship, if we don't allow this, then the building is going to deteriorate faster and faster. So, there is a real hardship here.
There is.
And back to number four, value of surrounding properties will not be diminished, it will be improved.
Chuck, can you lean closer to your mic? I can't hear you. Sorry.
The value of the properties will not be diminished, it will be improved because it will, the building will look better. Right now, it is hurting. If you look, it doesn't, you don't have to look real close to see that it's, it's deteriorating already.
That's true. But number two, that, that doesn't seem like the right, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because the extension will overreach further into the setback. That's-
That's opposite of what it should.
Exactly.
Well, I was working off of the understanding or ignorance of the, that the ordinance says that I am encroaching on setbacks. So, I, that ordinance, I feel, is observed because I actually am encroaching. Maybe I just didn't understand.
Can we just go through them in the order of which they're printed?
I'm writing them, I'm writing them down too for findings of fact, so if we-
Thank you. However, we have to-
If we do decide to go that way.
We have to-
We have to word them so that they make sense for findings of fact.
Because they aren't worded to make sense the way they are.
So, I was working on number two, which goes along with number one here. The purpose of the ordinance is to protect the public health, welfare, health and welfare, and to not change the- and to not change the neighborhood, the, the way the neighborhood is. These are such minor changes that they will not impact the neighborhood, and they will not cause any health or welfare issues.
What, what number are you on?
Those one and two, variant, the ones that kind of go together.
Yep.
Audrey, can I make a comment? Looking at the map that was scaled, when you come to number two, we see that the building itself is, is not being enlarged like we often see. What we see is just that one corner, which appears at the top right on that particular drawing. It's just that small area that's going to see the change. And I think that if I understand what you were just saying, Audrey, that the scale of the impact into the shorefront setback is minor. And I would weigh that against the, number four, the values of surrounding properties will not be diminished by the fact that this building will deteriorate further. And although we don't have any professional input from a broker or realtor, that it's pretty much common sense that if your house starts to fall apart, it's a deterrent in the neighborhood.
Number three, though, substantial justice. If this is approved, it's substantial justice to the owner because it allows them to keep their property in good repair. And it doesn't, it's not detrimental to the public at all. There's no detriment to the public.
Right.
What detriment to the public would be is we allow it to disintegrate and rot.
Right, the other way.
And that would bring the neighborhood value down. It's an effort to keep the home in good repair in a neighborhood that's very nice, so.
It's a pretty minor change.
Yeah.
So, that kind of answers number four as well. That the surrounding properties will benefit by proper maintenance to the home.
Not sure how to answer the special condition. I guess you could say that most houses in this climate have overhangs.
Yeah.
Generally speaking. I mean, there are those that don't, but they're there for a reason. And this one doesn't have it, so that maybe could be considered a special condition. What do you think?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it was built improperly.
It was. We have the same condition in one spot on our house and can't keep the clearboards below it in good condition because of the water coming down. It's terrible.
So, where, so where are you on, on this?
That was five, a special condition that would allow for.
All right, and so then, the proposed use is reasonable because it's really, it's really not a use. It's really, it's really not a use, it's a repair.
It's a remedy.
The proposed project, I would maybe use a better word, proposed project is necessary.
Well, it's, it's the use of the required setback area. Think of it that way. Might help.
Oh, okay, so he's using the setback area
Right.
to, for the overhang, all right. So, it's reasonable because, because there's no other alternative.
Right.
Because he has special conditions of no overhang.
That there's no,
Is it an alteration of the 3D building envelope? Is that a language that sounds helpful at all?
I think I have them all.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I would move, all right, you ready for motion? I would move to approve variance- I would move to approve variance 10V23 for the Rushforth's on tax map 258-015. I'm looking for their address.
42 Worcester Island Road.
Okay, for the requested variance in the Shorefront Residential District setback. Do we have a number? Number of feet?
Well, it varies because...
All right, give me the worst one.
32.
The worst scenario.
32 feet.
32 feet.
As opposed to 50.
32 feet as opposed to 50. And then we have the linear, that linear?
It's in the application.
God.
65.
60.
I already forgot.
Oh, God, I just looked at 62.5 to 65.2. Wait a minute.
65 feet, 8 inches. Linear feet with 10-inch overhangs.
With the linear feet as mentioned by Sarah.
Well, actually, it was... It's 65 feet, 8 inches.
Oh, 65 feet, 8 inches.
Yep. For a total of 89.5 square feet.
And that the proposed extended overhang is 10 inches.
Which is about the minimum overhang that you want to put up anyway.
All right, well, we'll put the word... Yeah, well, I'm not going to put that word. 10 inches.
Conditions?
Oh, yeah, conditions. So we can't say per plan because there is no plan.
This is a plan.
I'm not going to use that thing. That's why we gave the numbers, conditions. What did we have? Okay, the linear encroachment of the overhang shall be added to the zoning board appeals application incorporated as part of the approval, which I did. Which I did verbally.
You did. My suggestion is that one and two don't apply. The reason one and two were originally suggested as conditions is in case the board modifies what the application is looking for. Sometimes the board comes to a different conclusion than what the applicant has asked for. That's where those two conditions come from. The fact that you have something in the plan and you've called it out in the motion, I don't recommend. You need one and two. But the three and four would be the recommended conditions.
A final plan shall be provided.
Well, I think that's this.
Correct.
Well, what is this called, then? If we're going to use this, let's give it a title.
Okay. This is the sued disposal site plan.
I think you could write ZBA site plan with the date on it, refer to it that way.
August 23rd, 1969.
Oh, yeah, okay. A 1969 plan. It's what we used. That's part of the record right there.
Well, that's fine. I was answering Chuck.
I sure hope they have a new septic system.
Three, the notice of decision shall be recorded Carroll County Registry of Deeds. Four, this variance shall be valid if exercised within two years from the date of final approval, otherwise extended by local ordinance.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Are we doing roll call?
Kate started this.
Oh, that's right. All in favor? Kate says yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Drive careful.
Yeah.
Now, it could be icy out there.
Yeah, so...
Cold already.
So we are still in session? Do we want to... Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't check the spelling.
I'll write these up.
Don't check spelling.
I'll type it, and the computer will check the spelling.
There you go.
I don't spell.
Write the word keep on there or something. Your music is a paper.
I'm going to take it in my pocket.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Ah.
Oh.
I have one thing before. Okay. So I've spent six years on this board, and I am not going to run again. So I hope people out there are... I've had a really enjoyable time doing this, and...
Are you up for running?
I am.
Oh, I thought you were up as selectman.
I'm up for both.
Oh, okay, I didn't know they were at the same time.
I hope there's other people out there. You know, there's... The chair has done a good job recruiting people to alternates. We never had alternates in the past, so it's a good opportunity to get to know a little bit more about town government and the planning side of things. And I encourage people to run.
Yeah, and I appreciate you bringing that up. We need, you know, if you have any interest, please contact me.
I wanted to give ample opportunity for people to think about it, and if they do want to run.
Absolutely. What we don't want is not enough people on the board.
And you get to sign up by the end of January. I forget exactly when the sign up starts, but it almost always starts on my birthday, which is the last day of January. So I remember that.
Before we close, I had one thing.
Let me get the agenda here.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, so I guess nobody seconded your motion to close the meeting.
Can I go with mine?
Yes, what is yours? Let's go in order.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm whether we're having a work session on the 18th. I probably cannot come. I've got two days of classes to teach on the 19th and 20th, and I'll be really busy. Sorry. But I also want to participate in the procedure.
Right.
Changes.
So where we stopped was we've made it all the way through the rules of procedure in draft form, so we're going to now go through with a finer-tooth comb. So I would like to have everybody there. So I wouldn't mind putting it off. What do you think?
I think this is a busy time of year with budgets and elections and town meetings. It's a busy time of year with elections, town meeting, budgets, deliberative session. I find it difficult to try and come to these work sessions right now. Will we get a new version, red changes on them?
We will.
I don't know what changes were made, so I can't make it. So you can look at me, but I don't have it.
The ones in the minutes?
Well, the person who was there taking the minutes, you can speak with them about getting us the minutes.
I will communicate with them, yep.
Some kind of draft?
Well, she took notes about the changes, but they have to be incorporated into the whole document, which I don't know whether you do that or whether she's going to do that. I think you probably will do it since she may not be familiar with the document.
What I will do is I'll take the draft that went into that meeting. I will attempt to put these bullet points into it and then send it to someone that was at the meeting to see if that looks appropriate.
Okay.
Are you going to follow this agenda or...
I would like to just briefly bring up the conduct during meetings because it was brought to my attention on more than one occasion, not necessarily this board or the people on it, but we shouldn't be on cell phones when we're sitting on the board. And so I just...
Only time I left my cellphone tonight was to try to get dates.
Yep, and that's fine. I think if you're reading a note that you wrote to yourself off your cellphone, that's one thing. And it's obvious that you're reading off your cellphone. But otherwise, just as a matter of procedure, no cell phones during the meeting. That's all. It doesn't have to be a rule, I just wanted to bring it up.
Well, you're the chairman, and if you see somebody...
It's been mentioned by the public and passed along in various forms, so...
And taken care of.
Regarding my looking up all those third Thursday dates, the latest version of, it said revised 8/29/24. They must have meant 23 because we haven't come to August 29th and 24 yet. But anyway, if we could have a new version because what they had originally was, I believe, the last, it looks like the last Thursdays of the month?
Can you take a look at our schedule and make sure that we're... Our work sessions are the third Thursday of the month?
I will look at it. I believe what came to the board was a revised schedule, and the board adopted the schedule. I will also make sure that that's what's reflected. I would not go by the revised dates on the bottom of that schedule.
So wait for me up here, I didn't understand what you said.
I didn't understand it either. I seem to have seen one that was accurate. So are you saying there was a revised one that's accurate?
I believe they are all on the town calendar right now, yes, on the third Thursday at 6:00.
Town calendar, not on this type of sheet that Sarah's got.
I need one of these.
Okay, I can get you one of those, it's also on the website.
Okay, thank you.
All right, can we just get on to these minutes and be done with them?
Quick question, as far as our schedule. You wanted... You said something about January 18th.
Yeah, are we good with skipping that one?
Yes.
Well, could I suggest that we wait until we get the markups? The marked-up draft of what we agreed to at our last meeting first? Before we schedule a meeting?
We're not going to skip the 18th. We're unscheduling the meeting.
So we're skipping the 18th altogether?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So I don't believe I was in on any of those minutes.
Well, an ice age ago, I listed off the minutes that should simply be filed for recording purposes only because they were so bad. I can't find that list, and when I look back in the minutes that I set it, it just said "the minutes." It didn't list off the dates, bing, 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 bing. And I took all that time to go through them, and I'm not going to do it again. So what I've done is some of it. And I think that the recent ones, November 16th was that work session. You guys could... Somebody can motion to approve them as printed and be done with them.
That's the rules of procedure work section.
Yeah, I guess...
Well, whoever was here...
I guess I would need to see them in the document to...
Well, you know what? These aren't cast in a stone on Mount Rushmore. They can be fixed any time thereafter. Can we...
Really?
Yes, can we?
Okay, I motion to approve the draft minutes of November 16th, 2023. All in favor?
I...
I'll abstain, I wasn't present, but that's a vote.
Yes, you were. Oh, no, you weren't, I'm sorry.
I wasn't either, but I don't see any problem with saying they're okay.
And then the next one?
Then the next one I had was...
November 6.
November 6. And Klein, that was Klein-Kemp. So I've read them, and I'm going to make a motion to accept them as printed.
Second.
I just had one little typo, but it didn't make sense. You turn to the bottom of page. Page three, the top line. It says, Luther Freudenberg states, "This does not change things." As we ask applicant to know to work for 30 days. And so I think it's supposed to be not to. Drop the first TO and then change it to not. And I think then it'll make sense.
Yep.
Okay, then I'll restate the motion to accept them as amended on page three.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And then way back on September 11th, I had the board... This is again, this is Beckworth. And the first case was, either the first or second case was Palmer, that one that was down by the water somewhere, up that funny little street, Crooked Pond Lane.
Oh, yeah, very pleasant.
And what I did is I had the board, because we had the Beckworth case coming right at us again, accept the Beckworth section and not the Palmer. But tonight, let's just be done with them. I'd like to move to accept the whole packet of September 11th meeting, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah.
Okay. Then the next one is... I think I got two sets. That one I've got a set. You know, one set is 10 pages long, and one set is 10 pages, okay. That's done. November 16th.
Already approved.
Oh, we already did that.
23. Is that... We did that one?
Yes, we did.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion that any outstanding pending minutes preceding tonight's meeting that have not been accepted be recorded with the town clerk for recording purposes only as draft.
Second.
They already are, that's fine.
Just file them away. And there's quite a few still.
Oh, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.